Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Red Bank Planning Board. We are now ready to come to order this eighth day of January twenty twenty five. The time is seven oh five P M. Notice this meeting is being held in accordance with the Public Laws of nineteen seventy five, Chapter two thirty one. An adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by a notice sent to the Asbury Park Press. And the Two River Times and posted in the main lobby of the municipal building and on the municipal website. We have a roll call, please.
We have to swear on the new members or the re-upped members.
Okay.
So whoever has one of these wonderful sheets in front of them just want to stand.
Megan and Fred.
If you all just want to step, repeat up to me, I state your name.
I will.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm?
Solely swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Partially.
Partially.
And justly.
Justly.
Form all the duties.
Do all the duty.
Office of.
Of the office of.
Planning Board Member.
Planning Board Member.
Are the Red Bank Planning Board.
Bank Planning.
That's my ability.
My ability.
Thank you. Everyone can just sign and then push the sheets over to me so I can notarize.
Go out, planning board member.
Um, yeah.
Is that fine?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'll do the number. Mayor Portman, absent. Frank Fitzgerald, absent. Thomas Welsh.
Present.
Christina Bonatakis, here. Dami Kuso.
Here.
Lululele Demento. Barbara Boas.
Yeah.
Megan Massey, here. Wilson Bibi.
Here.
Itzel Hernandez. Fred Stone.
Here.
And Brian Farnigan.
And we need to swear it's on.
If you'll raise your hand.
Do you swear any testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? Oh, oh, I'm your oath. You have the oath. I'm sorry.
That's right, yes.
That's right. You just stand and stand up and we'll swear you in.
Stand and stand up.
I state your name.
I, Itzel Hernandez.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm?
Solely swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Partially.
Partially.
And justly perform.
Perform.
All the duties of the office.
To the office of.
Planning Board Member.
Planning Board Member.
The Red Bank Planning Board.
Bank Planning Board.
That's my ability.
That's my ability.
Congratulations. If you can just sign that and send it down here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we time to reorganize the board. If anyone want to be chairman.
I would make a nomination of Mr. Van Cruzo to continue as chair.
Second.
For the record, that's not what I meant.
Other nominations?
Any other nominations? It's nothing here for everyone. I know we're talking best of course.
You're not.
Yes, yes.
Christina Bonatakis?
Yes.
Yeah, oh. Barbara Boas? Megan Massey?
Yes.
Wilson Bibi?
Yes.
Itzel Hernandez?
Yes.
Fred Stone?
Yes.
Does anyone want to be vice chairman?
Continue. We nominate Barbara Boas.
Anyone else?
Nothing. So much. I'll second.
Barbara Boas.
Okay. So let's do a roll call vote on that.
I hope not. Thomas Welsh?
Yes.
Christina Bonatakis?
Yes.
Dami Kuso?
Yes.
Barbara, uh, Megan Massey?
Yes.
Wilson Bibi?
Yes.
Itzel Hernandez?
Yes.
Fred Stone?
Yes.
We have board secretary, I, yeah, I would nominate a lady.
Your second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Uh, our board attorney. We had several.
No, three or four hundred, no, so.
Yeah, people that were interested, but I would, I would like to nominate Mark Lex team.
And I would like to second that. Um, Thomas Welsh?
Yes.
Christina Bonatakis?
Yes.
Dami Kuso?
Yes.
Barbara Boas?
Yes.
Megan Massey?
Yes.
Wilson Bibi?
Yes.
Itzel Hernandez?
Yes.
Fred Stone?
Yes.
As much as I don't like newspapers, um, we did get rid of the Star Ledger. Uh, so we have our official newspapers as the Asbury Park Press and the Two River Times. Uh, I'd happily make that motion if someone would second it, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I forgot for, uh, engineer. Sorry.
It's right, it's not on here. Um, I would nominate T and M as our board engineer as they have. But your, but your submission was in the packet. Um, and. You know, the, the institutional knowledge that the T and M has is, is as I've said before, I consider to be priceless. To us in town and happily make that nomination as board engineer.
Um, Thomas Welsh?
Yes.
Christina Bonatakis?
Yes.
Dami Kuso?
Yes.
Barbara Boas?
Yes.
Megan Massey?
Yes.
Wilson Bibi?
Yes.
Itzel Hernandez?
Yes.
And Fred Stone?
Yes.
Tyler, we forgot about him. Um, we have the calendar. Did anyone have any questions? We're already going to make some changes to it. We'll do that at the next meeting. We don't have to do it now then. So we're gonna, we're gonna move, we're gonna do the calendar next meeting because we have a couple conflicts. So if you have any conflicts or.
Wait, it's all advertised, but it's, oh my god. It's one of the second meeting I'm not having, never mind.
Yeah, okay. So we'll skip the calendar. If you have any questions or comments about the calendar other than the ones we've already got.
Sorry, I got advertised for the February twelfth meeting, sorry, so.
Okay, so the calendar was in your packet. And I'll make a move that we publish that calendar.
And we're just removing the September twenty. Four.
Got plenty of time, got plenty of time to figure that one out.
Yeah, September twenty fourth.
So we need a second for that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, wonderful. Uh, okay, we have a regular meeting minutes, oh no, conflict board attorney. We've used Kevin Kennedy before. I'd like to continue that. Uh, can we do the, the, all the professionals in one vote?
Yeah.
And then C M E is our conflict engineer. If T and M has a conflict. Does anyone have a problem with that? Have a second?
Second.
All in favor you want to be, probably should do those.
Yeah.
Thomas Welsh?
Yes.
Christina Bonatakis?
Yes.
Dami Kuso?
Yes.
Barbara Boas?
Yes.
Megan Massey?
Yes.
Wilson Bibi?
Yes.
Itzel Hernandez?
Yes.
Fred Stone?
Yes.
And I'm sure you all read the regular meeting minutes from September twenty fourth. Does anyone have any additions? Or any questions about those? If not, can we have a motion to approve them, please? I'll second that.
Who was the first?
Wilson.
All in favor?
Aye. Any votes?
Just on the calendar, the bottom of the calendar says reorg meeting, January fourteenth. That's an error, I presume.
Let me know what it is for next year.
Oh, twenty twenty six. Sorry, I didn't catch that. Thank you.
And then we have a, uh, the dispensary that wanted to open at the laundromat behind the lighthouse has asked their, uh, they've withdrawn their application. So we need to vote on the resolution to dismiss it with prejudice.
Without.
Without. Fifty-four North Bridge Avenue, Block two, Lot eighteen. Does anyone want to make a motion to dismiss without prejudice?
Make motion to dismiss without prejudice.
I'll happily second that and we'll have a roll call vote.
Um, wait, can Tommy, Tommy was never here for any of the meetings.
He, he, he can, he can, he can still vote to dismiss without.
Oh. Tom, Thomas Welsh?
Yes.
Christina Bonatakis?
Yes.
Dami Kuso?
Yes.
Barbara Boas?
Yes.
Megan Massey?
Yes.
Wilson Bibi?
Yes.
Itzel Hernandez?
Yes.
Fred Stone?
Yes.
Okay, we have one item on the public agenda today, and that is in addition to the master plan of the environmental resource inventory. And from, uh, our planners, uh, B F J Planning, we have a presentation. Susan, are you there?
I'm here. Can you all hear me?
Yes. It's all yours.
Okay, thank you. Um, I don't have a, a formal, you know, slide presentation. Um, I just wanted to kind of speak through generally the process of an E R I, environmental resource inventory. Uh, touch on a few key points for the draft that you have before you and basically just hear, um, hear feedback. Um, just to give you, you know, a sense of what an E R I is, um, it is an amendment to the master plan. It's adopted by the planning board as an amendment to the master plan. Um, it's a technical document, so it's somewhat different from the rest of the master plan in the sense that it's not meant to be a policy document. It really is a pure inventory of environmental resources, issues, um, you know, components. Um, it, it's more of a, a document to educate the public and also to inform public policy. So it can inform land use decisions, transportation decisions, decisions about parks, um, all of these things, um, I think can look to the environmental resource inventory um, for information, but it's, it's not on its own intended to create policy. Um, and that's, I think, a good thing. It's, you know, it's essentially an appendix to the master plan. It can be updated as often as is needed. Um, it can be updated pretty easily. So, um, obviously, information changes year to year. Um, new sources of information always come, uh, and that's always an opportunity for, uh, for the borough to update that E R I. Um, so it, it really does act as kind of a companion on the technical side to the policy side of the master plan. Um, and there may be other, uh, similar types of amendments like traffic studies, um, that can play that role as well in the master plan. Um, so that is just a kind of a quick overview of what an E R I is and how it relates to the master plan. Um, this E R I, um, updates your current one, which is, um, at least twenty years old, dates to the nineties. Um, late nineties, I think. And so we, you know, we started with that as a, as a baseline, but obviously lots has changed, lots have changed, lots of things have changed, um, on the environmental front, uh, in the ensuing decades. So, um, we really got this process started off with the Environmental Commission in June. Um, they, um, as is usual for an E R I, they kind of led the creation of this and led the, the different components. Um, so we, what we did was we started by looking at E R Is elsewhere in the state, um, that had been recently adopted that, you know, we looked at about six to ten of them, um, to get a sense of best practices, um, information sources, typical contents, typical approaches, you know, mapping approaches, um, and that was really helpful just to see how other communities, including some in Monmouth County, are, are approaching this. Um, so we did have a meeting with the E C in June, a kickoff meeting, just to kind of go through the project scope. We talked about the content of the plan of the E R I. Um, and really talked through a draft outline with them about what they'd like to see, kind of their vision for the components of the inventory. Um, as a result of that, we actually added a couple of things like, uh, noise pollution and light pollution, uh, primarily to that, that list of initial chapters. And so really with that guidance from the E C in June, um, we hit the ground running with creation of chapters. Um, there are ten total chapters in the E R I clocks in at just under a hundred pages. Um, each chapter is fairly short on its own. Um, it starts with an introduction. Um, and then it really takes you through a lot of sometimes related, uh, environmental resources or components. Um, there's topography, which is really just about slopes, and, and there's not a whole lot of those, uh, in Red Bank. So it's a short chapter, geology, talking about things like bedrock formations and rock, that type of thing, soils very closely related to that. Um, you know, hy- hydrology is really anything about water, uh, particularly groundwater. Climate and air, that's where you look at things like pollution and also climate change, um, vegetation and wildlife. Um, really focuses on designated species that are on, um, you know, a state or federal list, but also just thinking broadly about land, land cover, um, vegetation cover and, and what that means for habitat, uh, in Red Bank. Land use bars heavily from the master plan, um, because that was just done and, um, you know, it really is a good baseline for that. So it's a very quick overview of the, of the land use. It's not meant to, to duplicate the master plan at all. Um, and then historic and cultural resources, um, again, overview, a lot of that information comes from the master plan, uh, and the historic preservation element. Um, chapter nine is utilities and infrastructure, really just kind of the hard infrastructure, um, electric, water sewer. Um, and then lastly contaminated sites, so brownfields, uh, or other sites that are on some sort of a list, um, you know, with D E P. Um, and we map those, um, as appropriate. We have them in table format. So you'll see, um, you know, each chapter kind of goes through this. Um, there's a lot of maps. There's a lot of other graphics. We really tried to make it informative, but not encyclopedic. Um, I have seen E R Is that are three, four hundred pages for communities that are about the size of Red Bank, and, and that just becomes a little bit too much to, to even grasp. So we tried to, to really take a narrative approach. Um, dig as deeply as we, we felt was maybe appropriate and really go where the information led. Um, the information sources are primarily state, uh, and federal agencies, but really, we tried to find information wherever we could in publicly available sources. Um, and there are footnotes at the end of each chapter, which I think may be the most helpful thing, actually. Um, so you can click through those with hyperlinks and see where the information came from, which will be helpful in the future for updating this. Um, you know, obviously links change and, and some of them may become dead over time, but, but it's, it's very clear in the footnotes where that information came from. So a future E C uh, could pretty easily find those updates, um, or at least know where to, to start looking. Um, so we basically submitted these chapters in draft form to the E C as they were done, and we got comments, um, sometimes one or two rounds of comments um, on edits, things were missing, things we didn't get quite right, um, information they wanted us to try to track down if we could. Um, and so we would make those edits, uh, really throughout the process. Um, and, um, that's really what you have before you, um. You know, we, I think we finished it mid-December, so you, you've, you've had it. Um, it does have to be adopted by the planning board as an amendment to the master plan, um, even though it was largely prepared under the jurisdiction of the, of the E C. Um, so with that, I, I do have, there's a half a dozen edits, changes, as is often the case, that I wanted to take you through, but first I thought I would pause and just answer any questions or just get any general feedback that you all might have. I will say that my own planning board on which I serve, we updated our E R I last year, and the questions were about like this. It was about a ten-minute approval process, but, um, understood. It's a very technical document, um, and it's been pretty well vetted by the E C, but anybody have questions just about the approach or overall process? Okay. Well, let me take you through, there are six or seven, I think, minor edits that they should be part of the record so that you could potentially adopt this tonight, subject to um, those edits, and they were caught by the E C really late in the year. Um, so I'm just going to take you through them. Again, minor stuff. Um, the first is on the acknowledgements page, just making sure that the E C and the green team membership roster is up to date, and we have the latest list.
One second, who's it?
Go ahead.
We have a question from the public.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Our fault. We are on mute.
Uh, yeah, my name is Kenzo. Hold on, I, I'm, I've been.
I guess the mic on.
Hold the mic close.
A resident in Red Bank for ten years, very much like the consulting shop. I, my business is in the, uh, special location, to, to give a special location. And the draft time they get together is, is, uh, very comprehensive. But there may be some other things that township may want to consider. Um, so my question is not so much for Susan, but for the town itself. Do you have anyone here on the staff that has any experience working with geographic information systems or G I S? So Susan's basically, all of those maps or spatial data layers are probably using Esri to kind of produce that report. Um, but there are a lot of other layers that may not be particular to her that you guys could be adding. Uh, you could look at, um, say, uh, tact, geoco every address in the, in the, in the city and, and you do all the tax, all the tax data, right? So you can look at each individual property and look at the tax system, right? Um, thinking about Red Bank is, uh, over fifty percent of the homes in Red Bank were constructed before nineteen sixty. So lead paint is an issue, right? So, you know, is it something you want folks want to focus on from a mitigation perspective? The other thing is, um, uh, Susan, Susan, I get, you've heard of, I'm sure you've heard of scope two emissions.
Um, I'm sorry, I didn't catch something, emissions?
Hold the mic right up close.
It's on.
So basically, um, it's the, the carbon, it's tied to the carbon emissions, tied to your purchase of electricity, natural gas, all the boilers in the, uh, in all the heating, uh, heating, electricity and air conditioning, right? You're basically purchasing electricity or a natural gas. And that electricity has a carbon cost embedded in it for whom you choose to produce it from, right? So a lot of towns are now doing around the country is they're basically chaffling their scope to emission footprint. Right? So Red Bank doesn't have a lot of scope to emission footprint, the social, the social cost of carbon. I don't want to get a lot of detail here, but, um.
You're getting pretty close.
Um, I, I know that, but what I'm saying is I think, this makes a lot of sense. But there are other things that long-term the planning commission could consider to kind of add to that capability. And having some in-house capability to kind of build your own spatial layers and all your reporting may, makes a lot of sense, right? So my last question for Susan is, what is the cost to this, to this, to the town for this study?
Uh, this was a twenty-five thousand dollar study.
Okay, so if you go on, if you, you go online, the average cost for, for E R Is between these are fifteen thousand dollars. For, for a town the size of Red Bank. So clearly they're at, they're clearly adding a lot more value than what additional cost is. But, um, I'll finish by saying as a resident here, on behalf of, of, of the Environmental Commission and, and maybe, uh, establish some more best practices. And Susan, you know, I think we can have this session offline as well.
Sure, sure. Yeah, I mean, I think it's a, it's a great baseline. As I said, it really should be updated hopefully a lot more often than the since the last time, um, because new information is going to come out and, and like you said, the mapping capabilities are there. Um, I, you know, one, one area that the E C was interested in looking at even further is, you know, electrical usage and really looking at how Red Bank compares, and that information just isn't really available, uh, in any cohesive way. Um, it's, we, we searched, we tried to find it. Um, but that's the type of thing that I think is going to be, become more available over time. Um, you know, utility usage, especially when thinking about E V charging and, and more and more electrification, it's going to become an issue. And so I think the state is going to start providing more data and, and, and I would urge the borough to, you know, keep a lookout for that. I know that E C will keep it on their radar.
Susan, all this information is publicly available. All this information is publicly available. And I think it's important longer term, you know, they're doing great work, but I think it might be prudent for the, for the commission to develop their own internal G I S capabilities. Build their own other mapping layers that are not part of the current, current report.
Yeah. It's good.
Um, so we.
Turn on your mic, Tommy.
I'm sorry. So the borough currently is actually, uh, going through a change with spatial data to try to make everything come over. Back in two thousand two, two thousand four, we did invest in a mapping system in the planning office. We had all the nuts and bolts, everything to go with it, and it got scrapped about eight years later. Gal O'Reilly headed that effort. It was hopefully going to be successful, but it went away. So, yeah, we're, we're, we, we were in front of it before and it went by the wayside. As far as lead, we do track that now because it's, obviously it's the law as far as rentals and whatnot. So we do have a way to track that. We have a third party that takes care of us for that as far as documentation to the state and what, but I see what you're saying. And to me, looking new into spatial data, some of that, if, um, mistake and tell me, uh, they are able to help with that program with us to combine that so everybody has access to it as well.
You can fill out every address in, in the town till that one, and then you can put that as a spatial layer on, on. Um, if you had Esri as like a reporting tool, um, you may want to invest in, you know, basically, I can do this, but support, support your business.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you spending some time.
Yeah, thank you, for sure.
And any other questions from the board or public? Okay.
Doesn't look like it.
Okay, um, so I'm just, go back to edits, um, that you would need to incorporate in an approval. So I mentioned the acknowledgements page, just making sure uh, the roster is up to date. We have it, it was sent to us this week for the E C and the green team. Um, another one there was a discussion on page sixty-eight about, um, the potential creation of a new historic district on Irving Place. At the time we wrote that chapter, that was sort of out there, um, being discussed. As we understand, it's, it's not really proceeding, uh, that there wasn't really support, uh, for that district. So we will remove the paragraph on page sixty-eight that discusses that Irving Place District. Um, on page eighty-six, this is table ten-four, it's, um, it, it's, uh, you know, a table of, um, you know, contaminated sites or sites that were in some level of contamination. And this comes directly from D E P, so it spits out this list, and there are two properties on the list that are actually in Middletown, not Red Bank. Um, I think it has something to do with the zip code perhaps, but it's the Navis Saint Country Club and Shady Oaks condominium. So we'll remove the, the, uh, table, those from the table as well as, um, any discussion on that page. They're obviously not in Red Bank. Um, rest of these are very, very straightforward. Um, I think we had the incorrect date of the establishment of the Shade Tree Committee. Uh, it's, it was two thousand four, not two thousand seven, so we'll correct that. We understand that there is a new, uh, tree inventory that's been updated just in the last two weeks, so we will update the reference to that. Make sure that it's, that's the latest and correct, correct reference. Um, there was one place where randomly we did not capitalize Swimming River on page forty-eight. So, um, we did a search, that was the one and only place, so we'll capitalize that correctly. And then lastly, on the cover itself, it's a beautiful photo, uh, but it happens to show Middletown in the background, not Red Bank. Uh, and that was a mistake, thinking of, you know, where that photo was taken. So we will find, we have a series of photos that the E C shared with us. Uh, and we will find a beautiful water photo that shows Red Bank and not Middletown on the cover. Um, so those were all of the changes that we would suggest need to be made as part of any adoption of, of the E R I. Any questions or comments on those? Okay, well then. Uh, not, nothing. Oh, hi Nancy.
We have Councilperson in Blackwood here to say hello.
My name is Nicholas.
Yes.
Hi, I'm Nicholas Blackwood, thirty-four Chestos Street in Red Bank. I just wanted to say thank you to Susan and B F J for working with the Environmental Commission. I am the liaison and I was formerly, you know, thoroughly involved with the Environmental Commission. And, um, we do appreciate the work that went into getting the update and so I just wanted to make sure you're probably grateful for that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Nancy, and thank you for all the, the feedback and guidance.
Oh, you're welcome. And also, yes, it's great to have you here. This was one of my favorites, and that's the last time it was updated, so. Hopefully, you know, now that you have it up today, the E C will, you know, then, I guess, and we'll review to check over and make amendments as we see. So, again, thank you.
Thank you.
Nancy. Anything else for us, Susan?
That's all I have.
Great, so, um, our job here is to vote on attaching this, amending this to the master plan as submitted with the changes on the, the twenty twenty-three master plan. Uh, so if someone, uh, is any interest in making that motion, please do.
Yeah, I would make that motion. Excellent resource.
Maybe we have a second?
Second.
Great.
Thomas Welsh?
Yes.
Christina Bonatakis?
Yes.
Dami Kuso?
Yes.
Barbara Boas?
Yes.
Megan Massey?
Yes.
Wilson Bibi?
Yes.
Itzel Hernandez?
Yes.
Fred Stone?
Yes.
That is, that is the last. Thank you, Susan.
I just have one announcement from the board. Um, so there's going to be a new way for everyone to access the, um, agenda items going forward. Um, you will, you should have gotten in your email now, um, and a sign-in, um, code from something that's either Civic, Civic Plus or Civic Clerk. Um, check your email.
I did not. It's only, uh.
I didn't either.
Yeah, so if you, and just email me or call me tomorrow. Um, I also then sent you an email with, um, just now. Um, in that email, that's a training, um, a link to a training video that shows you how to operate the, um, the new system. Um, but the link that you got from Civic Plus or Civic Clerk, whichever one.
So, so I can tell, I got the link?
Yeah.
It was only active for, it actually said in it, only active for six minutes.
Yes.
Yes, and I didn't know what it was.
Okay.
So I did not click it, and, and I just clicked it now and it's, and it's invalid at this point.
Okay.
It's your email. I did not.
Alright.
Click it all.
I don't know why it's only a six minute.
It really is weird.
Yeah.
Um, but if you go to, I'll send you another link to the, to act, to the actual board portal, and if you just do forget my password, just, you'll start it that way. So I'll send you now a link to the actual board portal where you will just do, forget my password. Give me two seconds.
Okay, that's what I mean, yeah.
I think the one thing it asks you for is to activate it first, probably before we can even reset passwords.
No, it's a big thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, it will activate it, yeah. I think most people, because we, we've been trying and going back and forth with the, I think you just do, because I can't resend the, the activation. So I think if you go through, um, forget my password, they'll, they'll.
Oh, it says that I've already signed up.
Oh.
Yeah, so, 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 so I think you're right, you might just.
Just do, forget my password. Okay, and then I think we could vote to.
We, we'll be having a February twelfth meeting, we will not be having a January twenty-second meeting. We're going to begin some public hearings on the train station development. It's nice to see everyone.
And since we have Susan, do you want to just briefly, Susan, tell, say, what the next redevelopment step is?
Yes, so we had the public workshop, December eighteenth, I think it was, mid-December, about the same attendance as the first one, which was great, the room was full, and the input was really great. The developer basically presented their, their concept plan, there was a model there as well, I know some of you were there, so that was interesting to see. Lot of various substantive feedback, and so we are now working on drafting the actual redevelopment plan. It's going to have, you know, the overarching kind of bulk, bulk guidelines, that basically become the zoning for the redevelopment area, but it's also going to have some design guidelines and standards that the applicant or the developer would be held to. So that's the next step, we're working on that now, and that is what is going to be before you in February, the draft of that plan. The next step, if, once that plan is adopted, would be for the developer to come in for site plan approval. I, I don't think they're eminently ready to do that, I know Shawna probably knows better than I do, but that's going to be some months out after the redevelopment plan is adopted, so that's where we are in the process, it's still, I would say, kind of in the middle of the overall process, but it's really, it's great to see such strong public participation, a lot of interests, and I think it was a productive, you know, productive public session.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
We have a motion to adjourn.
Some more?
Second? Second. All in favor? See you all in February. Thank you, everybody.